Call to orders, City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1381, Monday, September 20, 2021. As usual, we'll start with the pledge and we will be led in the pledge by Ms. Ashley Paderera, who is a sixth grader at Wynwood South School. She is the daughter of Mrs. Gloria and Roberto Paderera. They are citizens of Forest Park and lives in the G section originally from El Salvador.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which is standing, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Ashley?
Appreciate it.
Okay, we will move next to the, is there a motion? Would clerk please call the roll?
Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Kirby?
Here.
Holt?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Sylvester?
Here.
Let the record show that everyone is present and accounted for. Next item on the agenda, motion, councilwoman?
Yes, first of all, I would like a motion to excuse the law director, John Wykoff.
I can.
It's been moved and seconded that we excuse law director, John Wykoff. Is there a discussion on the motion? There are none, all those in favor of the motion to excuse, let it be known by the side of voting, aye.
Aye.
Post? Law director is excused. There's another motion, councilwoman, Kirby.
Yes, I would also like to move to amend the agenda to remove from under new business item letter C.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we amend the agenda to remove on the new business item letter C. Is there any discussion? There are none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to amend?
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Motion to amend, passed unanimously. Uh, next item on the agenda would be the minutes. Uh, everybody should have received a copy of the minutes. Is, are there any changes or additions to the minutes? There are none, then the minutes will stand approved as presented. We move to item three, presentation businesses of the month, A and B, Mr. Paul Perre.
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. As you, as you all know, we're very fortunate to be recognizing two businesses of the month tonight. The first one is our August business of the month, uh, and then we will also be recognizing our September business of the month. We're doing that because we were on summer recess in August, so we wanted to make sure that our August award winner received us just due. Uh, our August business of the month is Griffin Fire and Pipe. Griffin Fire and Pipe recently moved into a vacant building on Chappelle Lane here in Forest Park. The company specializes in the installation, service, and maintenance of fire sprinkler systems for new and existing commercial properties. Their licensed and certified team has over thirty years of experience, and the company has equipped the service projects ranging from simple to complex. They are committed to keeping you and your facility protected at all times. The company can work with companies on any of the following systems: fire sprinklers, fire pumps, backflow, special hazards, and piping. Griffin Fire and Pipe holds a number of professional certifications, including several. It's a small business, a minority-owned business. As a matter of fact, I was talking to Mr. Griffin before the, the meeting tonight. His company was one of the companies that received a state inclusion grant, uh, if you're familiar with that program with the state of Ohio. Uh, actually, both of our award winners tonight were winners of that grant program from the state. So we're very fortunate to have that program in place, and very fortunate to have Bo and his company here in our community. The company is a member of the Associated Builders and Contractors of Ohio Valley and the Better Business Bureau. With that, I'd like to invite company owner, Bo Griffin Up, to accept his award tonight. Bo.
Thank you for this award. That's a surprise when I receive a letter for it. Uh, I'm happy to be in Forest Park. It's a great location for me for access to the highway and to get to all my suppliers without a lot of backtracking. So it's a great location for me and plan on staying here and growing that Forest Park. Thank you.
My apologies, I walked off without my script. How many years have I been doing this? Um, our September business of the month is another award winner of the state's inclusion grant. Surgi Health Solutions, our September award winner, is another new member of our business community. Surgi Health was founded in 2014 by Joshua Williams. He realized there was an immediate need for more efficient processes and high-quality products at reduced cost and increased simplicity in the healthcare field. In response to these needs, Surgi Health Solutions quickly established itself as a reliable provider of high-quality sterile processing products, services, and solutions. The company offers products and services that include sterile processing, operating room supplies, endoscopy, and education supplies. Their unique customer-focused approach helps healthcare providers increase quality, improve productivity, and enhance customer service. We certainly welcome this innovative and unique company to Forest Park. Unfortunately, I don't think Mr. Williams could be with us tonight. I will make sure that he receives the award, but we're certainly, again, I, I would be remiss if I did not say, uh, both of these companies were helped, and I think it was Ruddy Cincinnati who reached out to us and helped us learn about these companies and a very good program that the state of Ohio is running. We're very fortunate to be able to promote minority business development here in the city of Forest Park. Thank you.
Again, congratulations to both our August and September businesses of the month. We'll next move to item number four, which is communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. Recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meeting to tape recorder for ease of transcription, and each, uh, person is limited to five minutes. Uh, would you introduce yourself to us, please?
Good evening, Mayor Johnson, excuse me. Yes, I did get it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Shonda Ferguson Gordon, and I am a, a resident of the city of Forest Park and also work in the city of Forest Park. I came here tonight with a couple of concerns. I know we only get so much time, so I won't only give you a few. The first concern I have is public safety. When you call the city of Forest Park's police officer for assistance, I don't expect to be cut off by Officer Suzie that answers the phone and was very rude. However, after I calmed down and called back, I had, I, I was able to speak to another officer. However, the issue was not resolved, and I was very disappointed. And seeing that my tax dollars pays her salary, when I called for assistance, I expect some sort of resolution. Whether the problem gets solved or not, I understand we all can't, you know, solve every single problem every time a call is placed. However, the way, I couldn't even tell her what the problem is without her being so rude and just kept cutting me off. I didn't appreciate that. The second problem I have is I live at 11764 Hanover Road. That is at the intersection of Hamden and Hanover. A pod, a storage pod was able to be placed in the middle of the street. And if anyone knows, right, thank you, Shalisa, if anyone knows that is an intersection where either you turn right or left, it's pretty congested because of the cars on one side that are able to park. They allow a pod, a storage pod, to be placed in the middle of the street. On the opposite side of the street, one side you can park on, the other side you cannot. I would need to remind council members and the public that school buses have to make a right or a left turn there, coming onto Hamden or off of Hanover. And I don't know how many people in this room have a CDL, but that's pretty difficult to do, especially when you have children on the bus and there's cars parked on one side, and a pod, a storage pod, is allowed to be parked in the, it's not in the middle of the street, but on the opposite side of the street. I can see if the lady couldn't put it in her driveway because of the wires hanging low. I understand that, but it should have been placed on the other side where cars at least park. That pod sat there for four days. I live right there. Coming in and out of my driveway, going down the hill or coming up the hill, our visibility was blocked. We couldn't even see to come in and out of our driveway. That was a safety issue in itself. But my concern was the school bus drivers trying to make that turn with students on the bus, also with students getting off the bus to cross at that intersection. That was very dangerous, and I didn't think that the police had our safety at hand right there. I was very upset. And when I called back and tried to get some sort of resolution, I got none. I even emailed two council members, got no response. I'm very disappointed, and I'm here to share that tonight. A lot of my neighbors say, oh, I'm going up here too. Good, I don't see them. I can't worry about what someone else is gonna do, but I'm here tonight to express to each one of you, I hold you accountable for my safety and my family's safety. I hold each one of you accountable to speak for me and my safety and my family.
Shonda, I would like to say to you, you did send me an email.
Yes, I did.
With the phone number. I tried calling that email, I mean, responding to that email, and it didn't go through. I also tried to call, I did call the phone number, and I left you a message that I tried to respond to your email.
Tiny, I didn't get it. But I know one thing, when, when you want that vote, you come knock on that door. And I'm just saying, I'm very disappointed.
It did not go through, and I told you that, so I left my number with you. I said, call me at this number.
Okay, I didn't get that email, but...
Because I tried several times to call you.
Okay, well, I didn't get that email.
But it did not go through, so it didn't go through.
Well, I'm not here to gripe, I'm here to express a safety concern, also about the police officer, Officer Suzie, is if anyone else wanna respond. And then there's one more concern, it's a quick fix. When I came up here, I couldn't get in. This young man let me in right here. The door is locked. I understand that we're in a pandemic and you all have safety protocols, but look at the lights out there, look how dark it is. The lights need to be on to let the public know you are here and you want us in here to express concerns, so when there is a problem, it can be addressed. I'm not saying each problem will be fixed, but I am seeing our tax dollars, and Lord knows, we pay a lot of tax dollars out here. Those lights need to be on so somebody can see that we are in here and concerns can be heard. And I have one more question, I promise this is the last question. Why are the, the meetings held at eight o'clock? This is a working community, we go to bed at eight o'clock.
Well, I, I will answer the last part, but before answering that, I will tell you that, uh, the city manager has made notes of your concerns, and he will personally look into them.
I appreciate that.
But in, in regards to the meeting times, uh, we try to have the meetings at a time where most people, uh, we, we take into account that people are working. Uh, from what, over the years, from what we've been told in the response of the people is if we have the meetings earlier, that does not give them time to get off work, get home, and get back over here. Uh, there are places that have the meetings during the workday. We didn't think that was a good idea because people were at work. Bottom line is, there is no perfect time, so we try to have the meeting at a time where most people say, yeah, we think that's the best time.
I understand, thank you for your response. I just think seven o'clock would even be better, but eight o'clock, that's my bedtime. I don't know about nobody else, but I get up at five o'clock to go to work. Thank you for hearing my concerns.
Real quick, the, uh...
Yes, sir.
The, the door should be open, and if it isn't, I have personally opened it to check. I'll check it again, because the door should be open.
I think he checked it after I came in, and he said you had to pull it down really hard.
You gotta push, you gotta use the handle.
Okay.
I think it could be, um, because we have the signs up at most, you know, bring the back, you know, bring the light.
I run the bill and, and knocked on the door.
Maybe what we need to do is, is have a sign up in council chambers that the doors are open. Yeah, it is open. I, I had somebody in the last council meeting say the same thing.
And flip the light on, let everybody know we in here.
I think we're on, I don't know who turned the light on.
It's pretty dark in that lobby.
That's a very good idea, and we'll make sure that happens.
Really quick.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate you having come.
He, he wanted to say something, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think I heard Chelsea too.
That's fine.
Oh, uh, just really quick, Ms. Ferguson, you said it was out there, you said the storage park was in the street four days?
Yes, sir, four days. It was parked at 11760, right next to my house. I live at 11764.
Okay. I don't know if they're gonna be, you know, if they're doing work over there, or do you know?
Well, the lady was moving, but that's not the issue. She could, if, the pod could have been parked on the opposite side, and it wouldn't have been obstruction to the vision coming over the hill. My issue was, why would they allow her to park it in the middle, like, right there where traffic passed? Because there's no parking on that side of the street.
I, I just wanted to make sure that if she was doing work or something like that, that it wouldn't happen again, and that we...
Well, I filmed it, and, and the buses had to take a curve on each one, and I feared that if they hit one of the signs, that we would have to pay to replace. That would have cost us money, but then that driver would have been charged for an incident.
I have two questions about that, and I guess it may be directed to Mr. Jones. Did you, have you, um, received any communication from transportation or, or the school district about there being, that being kind of a hazardous or different?
The drivers just made, we do, we guided them around it very slowly, but like I said, I do have footage of that.
Very well taken, and, and we'll...
Thank you for your time.
One question, did you call 911 or did you call the, the main number for the police?
I called the non-emergency number.
Just making sure.
No, I wouldn't call 911 for an incident like that, but thank you, though.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. John, I did call it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move to the next item on the agenda, reports of standing committees. Uh, before I do that, did you have, does anybody else from the public wants to address the council? Okay, uh, usually at this time, this is when I say to the members of the public, obviously you're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting if you choose, but feel free to leave if you would like. Uh, we won't be, uh, we won't be offended if you leave. Thank you. Now, we go to reports of standing committees, the first of those being community development, uh, councilwoman, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time.
Okay, and councilwoman Moore, are there any questions for councilwoman Moore? Councilwoman Moore, I don't have any items on the agenda for you for the next meeting. Did you have anything that you would like to add?
No, I do not.
Okay, the next, uh, report would be Human Resources Committee, Vice Mayor Holt.
Yes, I would like to let, um, the citizen know that if you're applying for, to, uh, a commissioner board, you can no longer com- um, complete the application online. It has been taken down because of, um, scams or fear of, um, hacking or whatever. It has been taken down, but it does direct you to a PDF form to complete and either mail it in or drop it off. That would conclude, uh, conclude my, um, report for the human resource, but I do have something that I would like to add to, for next week, to the, um, I would like the economic development, um, to, somebody from that committee to explain to me the subcommittee of the economic develop, development committee, the minority business. I need that to be explained to me. Uh, also, um, I understand that there's going to be an event on the same day that the Harvest Fest is, which has been contributed, do it every year for the kids, and it's gonna be on the same date that the Harvest Fest is, and the city manager, I was told, had approved that, and also have contributed money for that event. So I need somebody to come and explain to me. I never heard anything about this through city council, and I thought any kind of events like that should go through city council, or city council should at least know about it. With that, it would conclude my report.
Okay, uh, I will make note to add those, your questions on the agenda for the next meeting.
If possible, if the whole subcommittee could come here, I need to know who the subcommittee is, because I was not aware that any of the, um...
There is no subcommittee.
That any of the committees could create a subcommittee, so...
Well, we will discuss that issue, uh, as, in our work session, as, as an issue of council. Uh, moving next chair, you didn't have any other issues besides those two things that you want me to add, right?
That's it.
Uh, next committee report is law committee, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, uh, no report at this time. Um, I would like to add to the agenda, because I know we have briefly discussed this before. However, um, with regards to the comments made by, um, Ms. Ferguson Gordon regarding taxes, um, a lot of residents seem to feel, um, not without merit, that the taxes are actually very high, so I think it is past time that, that council, um, there is a presentation done to, uh, explain the difference between property taxes and income taxes, um, to the general public, so we can have it on record, um, and also, um, maybe potentially look at, um, the mileage of the, the past levies that have been placed on there as well, um, with, with regard to, um, potentially finding a, a solution to alleviate some of the tax burden, um, that the residents feel, um, or maybe just a presentation from the, the tax department, um, in general.
Uh, again, we will, we will address that issue at the next meeting, Councilman Brown. However, it's probably one of those issues that we need to devote, um...
For Tom.
I need to, I need to postpone it for maybe not next meeting, because if we, if we do all of the things that we're gonna have on the agenda for next meeting, we won't go home until the next morning.
No, that, that makes, that makes sense.
Okay. But I will, uh, I will make sure that that item is on the agenda at an upcoming work session. And, and having said that, I will also, um, ask the finance department to, to reproduce, which they do quite often, the pie chart that shows what taxes are collected, for whom, and where they go. I think there's been, ever since I've lived in Forest Park, ever since I've been on council, I've heard this argument, and the bigger part of, of the misunderstanding is, everybody assumes that all of the tax money that they pay goes to us because we're the collection agency, and that we have control over how much money, how much those taxes are, which is incorrect, but we'll go into that at that meeting.
I think, uh, that it's not so much the property tax that is, that people are concerned with, because remember at one while, they were getting 100% credit. It's the credit that they're not getting the credit, because there are, there are a lot of people in the same situation that I'm in. I work for the city of Cincinnati. I pay the city of Cincinnati taxes and also pay Forest Park taxes. So that's the complaints that I have been getting. They don't so much mention property tax, because there are a lot of people that don't own property in the city of Forest Park. So it's not the property taxes that is in question, it's the, um, the income tax.
Right.
And like I said, I think, I think of, of the part of, without going, you know, into a whole lot of detail here, unfortunately, a lot of people don't understand, as he said, don't understand the difference between the two. And, and I'm not saying that's an ignorant thing, I'm saying they just, when, when people mention taxes, they consider all taxes as one.
Mm-huh.
But we'll, we'll do that, and we'll produce the chart that shows, because you are talking about different taxes than property and income.
Right.
Okay, next agenda, uh, next committee report would be public improvement of facilities, Mr. Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor, just a noted update that the, uh, baseball registration, uh, started today. So, um, it's available, information should be available on website and on the electronic board, so hopefully our residents and parents, uh, would find some point of favor to, uh, to get their kids involved with the baseball, uh, program for, for this year. So just a point of, uh, of note, and that concludes my comment.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Sylvester?
Um, Mr. Sylvester, um, I believe it's basketball?
Basketball?
Mm-hmm. Yes, registration for basketball.
I bet, uh, people won't pay attention to baseball, but, uh, okay. If there's a correction, then it would be...
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, all right, basketball.
Okay, next, any questions for Mrs. Sylvester? Any other questions? Next report, ways and needs, Councilwoman Kirby.
Uh, public safety first.
Public safety, Councilwoman Clark, sorry.
Uh, we had a very successful meeting, um, city manager as well as Chief Arns with, uh, the Urban League, uh, entering into and looking at a formal partnership with their social justice center, um, which is exciting because, uh, we are needing the support to help acquire, um, acquire, um, camps for our officers, which they're very excited about. And so that meeting went, um, very well. We are moving to phase two shortly, and I will update you when that happens.
Any questions for Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark, do you have any items for the agenda for the next meeting?
No, sir.
Next report, ways and needs, Councilwoman Kirby.
Uh, yes, um, first of all, a quick comment on the two businesses of the month. As I have heard Mr., um, Brim say on many of occasions, the two kinds of businesses that we recognize tonight are, are bread and butter. They are small, um, businesses which tend to grow in a forest park, and so I'm very pleased to see them recognized. Also, there is a lot of, uh, activity taking place in economic development. We have two initiatives on the table tonight for a large expansion of one of our businesses, also another minority business, and, uh, there are other people interested in some other, uh, segments in, in our community for development. And then finally, the econo, the environmental awareness program, a report on some of the activity taking place there. The large appliance collection program ended on August 26th, and we broke records in terms of the number of households participating and the number of appliances collected. There were ninety-nine households that participated, and a hundred and twenty-one appliances were collected, of which sixty-five are free on. We have those things properly drained and recycled. For the urban forestry program, the reforested forest park program, the ordering period has ended. Forty-one households ordered seventy trees, and tree delivery will take place the first full week in October. The tree removal registration ended in August with over one hundred households signing up for free tree assessments that will occur in September, and tree removal will begin in October and November. And if you remember, it's not just tree removal, but we also expanded the program to, uh, remove dead limbs within trees. Also, the computer giveaway program to student registration. Fourteen city computers have been refurbished. Eleven will be given to households who have children in the Winton Woods and Northwest School Districts, and three will be given to the Recreation Department to give to comp... and three will be given to the Recreation Department to give to computer workshop participants. And that would conclude my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none, Councilwoman Herbie, do you have any items for the agenda for the next meeting?
No, sir.
Next item is Internal Government Relation and Communication, it's small committee, I have no report. I'll ask any questions if there are any. Moving next to item number six, the mayor's report. I would report that, uh, more of an announcement than a report, that, um, this week, not this week, this month, starting September 15th through October 15th, is National Hispanic Heritage Month. Uh, and as far as the city goes, that's, we have restarted, as some of you will remember, we did before the pandemic, have young people come in to do the pledge. We started it back tonight, and we wanted to start it back with, uh, some person of Hispanic descent, uh, in commemoration of the Hispanic Heritage Month. Uh, this month, as, as I said, is observed, uh, it's a 30-day holiday through a period of a month, but the difference in this one is it crosses over two months, starting September 15th, ending on October 15th, and obviously, part of the purpose is to celebrating the history, culture, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestry, ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, South and Central America. Uh, this began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week, uh, through the, under the presidency of Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded to a month in 1988 with President Reagan. Uh, the significance of the day beginning in the middle of the month on September 15th is because this is a day where many of the, um, Latin American countries celebrated and do celebrate their independence from, uh, from colonial rule. Uh, some of those would be Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, in addition to, uh, Belize, which celebrates theirs on the 21st, Mexico and Chile on the 16th and 18th of September. Uh, as far as Forest Park goes, some data from the latest census shows that the, uh, Hispanic, Hispanic slash Latino population in Forest Park in 2010 was 6.4%. Uh, the 2020 census has shown that has increased to 8.23%, which in terms of the number itself, from six to eight doesn't seem like a significant number, but it is a very significant number. And the census also showed that they are the largest growing, the fastest growing population of, um, in, in our city. And also in Forest Park, uh, a, just, uh, for your information, uh, a piece of data that obviously I didn't know, but I'm glad that I do now, 34, 34.4% of all Forest Park residents were born outside the United States. So we are diverse in this, in this community, and our diversity is growing, and we have to, we have to never give up recognizing that diversity for what it is and embrace it and be proud of all Forest Park citizens and their contributions, not only to Forest Park, but to our country as well. That would end my report, I'll answer any questions if there are any. Seeing no one, we will go to item number seven, the city manager's report, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will, uh, try and keep it short and sweet tonight, uh, but I, there is one thing that, uh, citizens and city council need to be aware of. There, the 2021 Street Program, we've talked about it, um, beginning sometime in September, where we've, uh, weather permitting, the, uh, the program will begin on 9/27. The streets in order, uh, that they'll be started will be Crest Avenue First from Hamilton to Alliance, Hanover from Embassy to Northland, Cary Hill from Kemper to Lincolnshire, Lincolnshire from Waycross to Kingsbury and, uh, and Oak Stand. Um, there will be some delays, but there will be no street closures. There will always be one lane that will be open. However, if you get behind the machine that is doing the paving or the, or the, uh, the, uh, milling, uh, you could be delayed. So, uh, expect delays on those streets, they are working. The letters have started to go out to the first affected streets, they're being hand-delivered to the houses, and, uh, with more information on specific dates. But weather permitting, they'll all begin, the first one will begin on 9/27, it'll take about, uh, two to three weeks to get it finished, again, depending on weather. So hopefully if we have good weather, we'll be finished before, uh, before the, uh, end of October. And it'll be a great project for the, for the community, and, and it'll be a little bit inconvenient for the people who live on those streets, but, um, they'll see the rewards once we're finished. Um, there should be no blocked driveways, and took, but there will, if the machine just happens to be sitting in front of your house while it's working, you, obviously you'll have to, uh, delay your, uh, your leaving and your coming and your going. So, if you live on those streets, be prepared for a little bit of, um, traffic or a little bit of delay, leave earlier, um, than you might expect, so, um, but we'll be notifying each individual household, um, as, as the work is beginning, uh, actually before the work begins, so you can have a good idea as to when it's gonna start. But effective, uh, 9/27 is when it's gonna start, assuming that this weather, if we get some bad weather right now, obviously it'll, it pushes it back, it's weather dependent. The, um, following up on a little bit what Councilor Herbie said, um, the Economic Development Department is having its tire drop-off this weekend at, uh, Kemper Meadow Park.
Iron Meadow.
But, what did I say?
Economic development.
Oh, I'm sorry, I let's say environmental. Yeah, all will be taking your cars, I urge you to drop them off at his house. We'll give his, uh, we'll give his address later. No, yes, our environmental departments have, and, and it works out very well. So if you're out there in the community, and you're just wondering, what the heck am I gonna do with all these old tires? Now's your opportunity, drop them off for free, we'll take them, we'll get them recycled, and it won't cost you anything. Bring them down, we've got many volunteers, they'll take them and take care of them for you, just get them in there. And, uh, so it should be another good weekend for that, hopefully the weather cooperate again. And, uh, other than that, if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I, I think they're also doing the paper shredding this weekend at the same place.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, it's at the same place and same time on Saturday.
Yeah, if you have some shredding, any kind of paper that you need shredded, just bring it down, and there'll be shredding paper there as well.
Any questions for city manager? Hearing none, we'll go to item eight, other reports, then that would be the clerk of council, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to report that ordinance numbers 13-2021 and 16-2021 and Resolution Number 17-2021 were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Okay, any questions for clerk of council? Hearing none, thank you. We will next go to the next item on the agenda, the motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only ordinances number 17-2021 and 18-2021.
Second.
And move in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two occasions and read by title only ordinances number 17 and 18-2021, is there any discussion?
Just that they were posted as required.
Any other discussion? Hearing now with the clerk call the roll on the motion to suspend.
Clark?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes 7-0 of first item on the new business item A, ordinance number 17-2021. Would the clerk please read that by title only?
Ordinance number 17-2021, Amending Annual Appropriation Ordinance 16-2021.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move, uh, ordinance number 17-2021.
You would move what? You just moved?
Well, well, to, to put it up for discussion. I make a motion to...
Second.
And move in second that we adopt ordinance 17-2021, uh, is there any further discussion? Yes?
Um, yes, this is our fifth, uh, amendment for 2021 appropriations. Most of these are housekeeping changes. The significant issues are some appropriations to the suite, street and highway funds for salt purchases, a Caroline TIF advance, or, um, to, uh, cover appropriation, to cover county auditors' fees, um, capital fund improvement to purchase new playground equipment for Central Park, um, to pay off a lease in the fire capital improvement fund, and, and, uh, stormwater utilities, monies to pay for sinkhole and catch basin repairs, and, uh, to assist in, uh, the right farm basin maintenance and engineering costs. And I would urge adoption of ordinance number 17-2021.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on 17-2021?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-2021 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item B, ordinance number 18-2021. Clerk, please read this by title only.
Ordinance number 18-2021, Enacting Revisions to Section 09 Building Permanent Inspection and Plan Review Fees, with minor coordinating revisions to Section 3 of Chapter 156, Comprehensive Fee Schedule of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Forest Park to Update Building Department Fees.
And this is the first reading, so it will be on the agenda for the next week, for the next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, there's no voting on this one tonight. Next item on the agenda is another motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution numbers 18-2021 through 21-2021 by title only.
Second.
And move in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read of, and read the ordinance, the resolutions, numbers 18-2021 through 21-2021 by title only, any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes 7-0. Next item is item D, Resolution 18-2021, would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number 18-2021, a resolution consenting to the execution of a redevelopment incentive agreement between Megan Construction and the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of Resolution Number 18-2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
And move in second that we adopt Resolution Number 18-2021, is there any discussion?
Yes, this is the first of two, uh, resolutions, uh, to assist in the retention of Megan Construction in our community. And Megan, as we know, is a very high-profile developer and builder, um, in the greater Cincinnati area. They just recently completed the Winton Woods High School construction. They also, uh, did the Sharonville Convention Center construction, and also construction on Fountain Square. This is our, uh, incentive agreement, and because of the size and the scope of the project, we're recommending a redevelopment grant in the amount of $40,000. Um, we structure these so that we can usually recoup the expenditure within one to two years, and so I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing now with the clerk, please call the roll on Resolution 18-2021.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Resolution 18-2021 passes 7-0. Next item is item E, Resolution 19-2021. Clerk, please read that resolution by title only.
Resolution Number 19-2021, a resolution consenting to the execution of an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, and Megan Construction to complete a project within an enterprise zone of Hamilton County.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of Resolution Number 19-2021.
Second.
And move in second that we adopt Resolution 19-2021, any discussion? Yes?
Yes, this is the second of the two, um, items I referred to. Uh, this is to, um, consent to the execution of a tax abatement, um, grant by, uh, the Hamilton County Commissioners to assist in Megan's construction, in which they will invest a million dollars for major renovations and expansion to their corporate headquarters on Ashburn Drive. The company is going to retain 41 full-time employees and create another 12 full-time employees, and this will be a 75% abatement, eight-year abatement of new property taxes. This will not affect current taxes, uh, so we will still be getting some revenue even from this new development from day one. So I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, would the clerk please call the roll on 19-2021?
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Resolution 19-2021, yeah, I vote, I thought I did. I vote yes. Resolution, uh, 20-2021 passes 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item F, Resolution 20-2021. The clerk please read that resolution by title only.
Resolution Number 20-2021, a resolution requesting advanced payment from the Hamilton County Auditor.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of Resolution Number 20-2021.
Second.
And move in second that we adopt Resolution 20-2021, is there discussion?
Uh, yes, I'm not gonna get into this, because it's convoluted. Essentially, we do this all the time, we request advances on property taxes that are due to us, and so, uh, this is to cover some monies in connection with the, um, uh, Cincinnati mall TIF, and so I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 20-21?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 20-21 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item G, Resolution 21-2021. The clerk please read that resolution by title only.
Resolution Number 21-2021, a resolution requesting the Hamilton County Auditor to place special assessments against various properties by the City of Forest Park Community Development Department.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move adoption of Resolution Number 21-2021.
Second.
And move in second that we adopt Resolution 21-2021, is there any discussion?
Yes, this is a formality, we have to request that special assessments be placed on certain properties, primarily for, uh, cutting grasses, uh, at, uh, primarily vacant properties. And when this is done, we have to request that these assessments be placed against those with the, uh, county auditor. So I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on 21... Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-one.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-one passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item H, resolution twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-one. This, uh, this resolution must be read in full. The clerk please read the resolution.
Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-one, a resolution concurring with the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals to uphold in full the planning commission's refu, refusal of a zoning special exception to allow short-term rental of seven-one-three Cranford Drive, whereas ordinance nineteen dash twenty-twenty classified short-term rentals as a special exception in the R-one and R-two single-family residence zoning districts, and whereas the owner of seven-thirteen Cranford Drive, the applicant submitted an application to the planning commission to allow short-term rentals at seven-thirteen Cranford Drive, and whereas upon providing notice as required by law, the planning commission held a public hearing on July twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. And whereas in rendering its decision, the planning commission unanimously adopted eight findings of fact, and whereas the planning commission voted against granting a special exception by a vote of one in, one in favor, four against, and whereas the applicant filed an appeal of the planning commission's refusal to grant a special exception on August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and whereas upon providing notice as required by law, the Board of Zoning Appeals held a public hearing on September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and whereas in rendering its decision, the Board of Zoning Appeals adopted six findings of fact, and whereas the Board of Zoning Appeals rejected the appeal, and object, rejected the appeal and upheld the planning commission's decision in full by a vote of three in favor, zero against, now therefore being resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that the council does hereby concur with the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals to reject the zoning appeal and uphold in full the planning commission's refusal to grant a special exception to allow short-term rentals at seven-one-three Cranford Drive in the R-two zoning district. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Dr. Moore?
Yes, thank you. I move to adopt resolution twenty, number twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Been moved in second, that we adopt resolution twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-one. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Moore?
Um, no, I, it was just read in full, so um, there's no discussion.
Works for me, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-one?
Clark?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Resolution dash twenty-two twenty-twenty-one passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is a motion. Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental report.
Second.
Been moved in second, that we receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental report. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those favor of the motion, let it be known by the side of voting, aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Any other business to come before the body? Any other business to come before the body? Hearing none, we are adjourned.